But can you at least just call the roll for the record so we know which council members are present?
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Present.
Terracio. Walker. Kennedy. Manning.
President.
Jackson.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Newton.
Ms. Newton did inform me that she would be late, but she was tied up with the meeting. Mr. Brown, are you present?
Yes, Chairman Livingston, I'm present.
Can you tell us who is here from the staff?
Yes, sir, there are a few people that are here from the staff. I will name those that I know that are on the call, and then ask some other ones to list themselves. So I know on the call, we have the Budget Director, Mr. James Hayes. We also have ACA Powell and ACA Thompson on the call. And we also have Mr. Quentin Els on the call. And I believe we have a few others that I may not have named. So those staff members of Richland County Administration, would you please identify yourself as the chairman?
Finance Director Stacy Ham's here.
All right, Mr. Chair, and I believe we also have Mr. Shia Myers on the line by phone as well. So I believe those are all the folks that are on the call right now, sir.
Thank you very much.
This is Mr. Hayes here. I should have two other members of my staff who should be trying to dial in, Marjorie King and OJella O'Brien. So I think they're trying to get in now. But those should be two other members that should be joining us as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, remember, the purpose of the meeting today is to just simply go over the first portion of the recommended budget for fiscal 21. And the primary focus today, as you all know, is on the primary grant funds is what we're focused on today. Mr. Brown, I'll turn it over to you unless one of my colleagues has any questions before we get started. If not, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to first of all, start by reminding council, you should have received on last Friday a physical copy of the budget book along with a transmittal letter. For the benefit of the public who is unable to physically get a copy of that book, that information can be found by going to richlandcountysc.gov. On the right-hand column, click on Government, then click on Department, then click on Budget and Grant Management. There you will see annual budget reports. And from there, you can click on the budget annual report, and you can find the document that we're going to address on this afternoon on the county's website. I want to also make sure that you have access to that for ease of access and transparency. As a part of that, we're going to also attempt to share the information via the screen that we have while we discuss the budget. Just for a moment, Mr. Chair, I want to read a brief statement here. And then I'll turn it over to our Budget Director, James Hayes, to walk us through the book. But as we near the end of the fiscal year 2020, county council will consider the fiscal year 21 budget in a series of work sessions. Though all budgets for fiscal year 21 were approved by the council last year, millage agencies and grant budgets must be approved annually. In addition to seeking the approval of the millage agencies and grants, I will recommend revision to some of the county's other funds. We all know COVID-19 has created challenging economic conditions by placing a sizable drain on the financial resources of businesses and governments across the nation. As businesses have struggled to remain profitable, they have modified operations and made decisions which have impacted their employees. We have seen that develop locally as companies have closed their doors or reduced their workforces. The trickle-down effect of these decisions are projected to have a significant impact on county government. Knowing this, we will need the collective help of all elected officials, appointed officials, and department leaders to preserve every budget dollar possible. Though the full financial impact of COVID-19 is still unknown, to include any potential losses in general fund revenue, Richland County is confronted with a serious budget challenge. This is a new situation for us to face, and accordingly, we must make difficult decisions. I implore and recommend that everyone use the utmost discretion with how budget dollars are spent through the remainder of this budget year. I suggest a careful review of any anticipated hiring decisions, and if at all possible, refrain from filling any vacancies or delay filling vacant positions as long as possible. At this point, every dollar is precious, is a precious commodity that must be guarded with much care. Lastly, I understand that I'm asking everyone to make tough decisions. Realizing that we are the guardians of taxpayer dollars, we must exercise the responsibility with the utmost respect and diligence. I am confident that we will meet our budget challenges successfully and appreciate the effort that you will make to ensure that will happen both now and in the future. And so again, members of council who are on this call, we are not asking for any decision to be made at this point in time. We are certainly wanting to share the information that we have available with you. But I'm going to be asking that we delay any specific decisions until we get a better understanding at the conclusion of this fiscal year of what our financial outlook actually is. With that being said, I want to turn it over to Director Hayes. And if you give me a moment, I'm going to begin to share the screen for the audience so they can see the budget book. Director Hayes?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Brown, before Mr. Hayes gets started, let me ask you one question, referencing the letter you just referenced, your comments you just made. Now, you
Yes, sir.
You did reference department heads and elected and appointed officials. We all referenced the same statement to our folks who receive funds in terms of the military agencies and other folks we fund? Is that
Absolutely, Mr.
Letter?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, that certainly taking direction from council. I would agree that that would be appropriate for our additional people that we fund. So if it pleases the council, I would certainly include that information in my official memorandum. But yes, sir, that will be good guidance.
If there's no objection from my colleagues, I would suggest that you also incorporate that, too.
I fully concur with that, Mr. Chair. This is Joyce Dickerson.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you may proceed.
Mr. Chair, can you restate what the administrative restate, what's he going to include or send out? I didn't hear.
Well, Mr. Malinowski, he referenced the department heads and the elected and appointed officials. And I'm saying the same message ought to go to those military agencies and other folks we fund, too.
Okay, thank you.
This is Livingston, this is James Hayes. I'm going to go ahead and get started. Again, first of all, I want to thank you all for giving us another opportunity to share some insights into the budget process as we move forward with FY21 budget amendments. Just a couple of housekeeping items before we get started. The agenda today, we'll be covering the general fund, the general fund grants, as well as external grants, that are grants that come into the county. H tax, accommodation tax. And then once I complete my sections, we'll turn it over to ACA Powell and other members of the Community Planning and Development Department, who will talk about the neighborhood redevelopment grants and the conservation grants. Also, just to echo what the county administrator just said, we are recommending, again, certainly it's under council's decision, but we're recommending that council will not amend the general fund at the moment for two reasons. One, because of the impact of COVID-19 for FY20 is still currently unknown. My staff and working along with Director Ham's staff are looking at some revenue projections. But a lot of information still is yet unknown. It won't be known to a later date. But we're trying to get refined projections to admin and industrial council as soon as possible. So we're asking that any amendments to FY20 will be pushed back to a later date. We did include in the letter of transmittal to council alternative dates on amending the general fund budget itself. And again, the second reason why we ask is because, again, as you're going to see, you all have already actually approved a budget officially for FY21. So departments do have some funding available to start the year. And any amendments really wouldn't have to be done until after we, after July, once we have some more defining numbers. But again, those are just some housekeeping duties. And we'll start on page five, which is showing on your participation screen of your budget book. We'll start with general fund overview. General fund overview on page number five. As you see, page number five actually shows the biennial budget as it has currently been approved by council. The top part of the page shows the revenue. The bottom part of the page shows the expenditures. The FY20 budget as approved by council, as you can see, is 183.2 million. And it's 186.7 million for FY21. Speaking, to give you more detail, as you can see, we budgeted revenue at 172.6 in FY20. We budgeted revenue in FY21 at 175.8. We budgeted transfers in at 3 billion, no transfer in for the sake of council, is from H tax. H tax is the only fund that currently supports the general fund. And we budgeted that same amount in FY21, excuse me. Use of fund balance, we budgeted 7.5 or roughly 7.6 and roughly a little bit more than that in FY21. I would like to pause a moment and give council, remind council some history of why that number is the size that it is. And biennial budget one, that based somehow for fund balance was 1 point, the balance of the budget was roughly 1.7 million. Last year, as council may recall, we were facing a budget deficit when we were building the budget. Now, I want to clarify, this was not a cash deficit. Because as we were coming out of FY19, certainly the general fund took in more than went out. So it was not a cash deficit. But it was a budget deficit in the sense that what we were budgeting as funding sources and resources and revenue for FY20 was less than what we were budgeting for expenditures and transfers out. So it was a budget deficit. And the reason that deficit came about is when we were preparing, and this is all historical information, when we were preparing biennial budget two, we went back to each department, and we noticed that most of the departments budgeted personnel expenditures were less than what the position control said they should have been. So obviously, we had to make those budgets whole. So in encountering, so in making their budgets whole, we encountered a budget deficit of roughly 3.5 million, which we shared with council in the very first work session of FY, FY, excuse me, at the beginning of the very first work session of last year. So we were short of roughly 3.5 million. Because we didn't have a permanent county administrator in place at the time, obviously, staff could not recommend increasing the use of fund balance. We had to bring that to council. So later on in the process, once we spoke with Director Ham, she informed us that we had roughly 5 billion in fund balance over and above what our fund balance percentage was. So we brought that to council. We used 3.5 million of that to close the deficit. And then the other 1.5, 1.6 council used in second and third reading of last year to make motions to fund items like additional funds for the total rewards. There were some items, again, for the, make the public defender more competitive. And then there was some funding for some outside agency. So I'm saying all that to show you why the fund balance number is where it is today. Because we had to use our funds to balance the budget plus also some council motions. But I'll stop right there to entertain any questions council may have at this point.
Any more questions?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes, Mr. Livingston.
So in other words, for clarity, and for those that are listening, we did not actually have a budget deficit. But for lack of a better term, we use that, right?
Right, right. So right, again, this is
Yeah, so we never had a budget deficit because we always had the resources. It was just the way
That's true. Again, I want to clarify, there was no cash deficit coming out of FY19. The amount of money that came in in FY19 certainly exceeded what went out. What we're saying is when we were budgeting for FY20, what we had in terms of being able to fund the budget was less than what we had budgeted for expenditures and uses. So there was, so that was because there was a shortfall in the departmental personnel item. So when we made those budgets whole, the amount of money that we had available to cover that was not enough. And we ended up having to use additional fund balance to balance the budget. So that
I understand. Mr. Hayes, I understand. I just wanted to make sure for others, outsiders that were listening, that we did not have a budget deficit. That's what.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Are there any more questions? Or I can proceed?
You may proceed. Is anyone else having static?
I am. I have.
I'm also.
Yes.
I wasn't able to hear that, Mr. Hayes. There's a lot of static on my end.
Okay, I'll repeat that. We're now going to the bottom of page five, talking about the expenditure side of the general fund. And the general fund has two types of expenditures. As you can see, the general fund has expenditures that it funds itself, which is 174.1 in FY20. And it was budgeted at 177.9 in FY21. But the general fund also supports other funds. Transfers out. It supports the public defender by roughly 3.5 million. Emergency telephone, roughly 1.3 million. School resource officers, roughly 1.5 million. Vicent assistance, roughly 700,000. The airport, 350,000. All of these various funds come to approximately 9.1 million. So the 174.1 that was budgeted in expenditures is for the general fund itself. But the other 9 million is the general fund support of other funds. So consequently, you get a total funding uses of 183.2. So thus, you do have a balanced budget of revenue and sources of 183.2 and expenditures and uses of 183.2. And then for FY21, same thing, balanced budget, 186.7 of revenue and other sources, and 186.7 of expenditures and other uses. So yes, that's indeed, you do have, so that's where we are currently, as we state today.
Mr. Hayes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Hayes, would it be possible to provide us with a list of those other agencies that you talked about just now, the 9 million? Or is that in this document somewhere?
Transfers out? Yes, yes, sir. All right, and Mr. Jackson, I'm actually glad that you brought that up. Because that was a housekeeping item that I forgot. Obviously, we're going to attempt to answer all of council's questions today. But we're going to use the format we've done in the past. So if there's something that comes up that we are not able to answer today, my staff is actually listening. And we're going to complete a companion document that we will get out to council well before next week's meeting. But yes, in that companion document, we will have a breakdown of the other funds that the general fund does support. So yes, sir, my staff is listening to make sure we give you all that breakdown.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're still on page five at the bottom of the page. So moving over to your right. So after we've left the first part of the page, which shows the balanced budget for the biennial, the next column shows we had some departments that requested additional funding for FY21. And then the next column shows some additions, some what the administrator is currently recommending. The only thing the administrator is recommending was some person, some public safety items that the council has been made aware of. In other words, so the increases that you will see very shortly are just some public safety items that we currently did not have budgeted within FY21 as it currently stands. And those will be items for the Richland County Sheriff's Department, the EMS, as well as the detention center items. All the departments that this council, of course, has had heard issues about in the past. So the county administrator tried to address those items. And even though other departments had requests, obviously, with limited potential funding available, the county administrator only recommended items that were associated with public safety expenditures. Now, that 4.3 million that you see in additional recommended, you're going to see that on the next page because that's one of the numbers that the county auditor said what would be available in potential new revenue. Now, keep in mind, the county administrator nor budget is saying council has to do a millage cap. We're not doing it. That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is we're giving, as you'll see on the next page, we're giving you the funding, where funding opportunities lie. Certainly, when council get the second reading, they can make a determination of what, what or if any additional funding will be placed into the general fund. But the county administrator knew there were some items related to public safety that we could not fund within the current realm of the budget. So he was saying that these are some items that could potentially be funded through the additional revenue as provided by the county auditor. So that 4.3 million would cover additional public safety expenditures if the council opted to use the additional revenue projection as presented by the county auditor.
Mr. Chair?
Is that Mr. Raciya?
Yes.
I have a question about the additional recommended as to whether it includes, you mentioned, Mr. Hayes, you mentioned public safety. Does that include funding towards the fire department?
That's a very good question, Mr. Raciya. That would actually be what we were talking about next week. But that's in the special revenue fund. And all the funds we discussed today were the general fund and grants. But that is not in this 4.3 million, but those funds are addressed in next week in the special revenue fund. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You may go ahead.
Okay, so now we're ready to go to page six, which is general fund revenue review, page number six. Page number six, the first two columns simply is a detailed breakdown of the overall general fund revenue that you saw on page five. So in the first column, it shows you the 172.6 million broken down into our different general fund revenue categories. As you can see, our largest category is property and other taxes. But we have other ones like licenses, permits, and fee in lieu. So all of this page does is actually give council more detailed breakdown of the general fund revenue. What I will point out to council is if you go to the third column, where it says FY2021 projected no mill increase, this represents the amount of increase based off what the county auditor says the general fund will receive out of no tax increase. And that was roughly $2 million, 1.9 to be exact. Which is why you'll see FY21 currently approved at 175.8. But with a no-mill increase, the general fund will pick up, based off his numbers now, that could change, will pick up an additional 2 million, roughly $2 million, to go to 177.8. So there will be a $1.9 million revenue increase from a no-tax property increase. If council were to opt to go to the cap, the number would go from 175.8 to roughly 180.2, which represents 4.3 million, the same 4.3 million that was referenced on the previous page, if the council opted to fund some public safety expenditures that they've been made aware of. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Manning has his hand raised?
Thank you. Mr. Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have the population growth and/or the CPI number yet?
Staff, did you hear that question?
May I ask a question to Mr. Manning?
Yeah, if anybody hears me out there.
For those of us listening at home, could you explain or state what CPI is for us?
Sure, that's the Consumer Price Index. According to state law, Act 388, local governments cannot legally raise taxes. As a result, in my 11-plus years, this county council has never raised taxes and has stayed within the law. However, it does indicate that a local government is allowed to make an adjustment based on the growth of the county's population and the Consumer Price Index, which a lot of people just refer to as inflation.
Thank you.
I did hear from staff. Are y'all sitting there?
I'm here.
I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hayes? Look like we
Disconnected.
I think we've lost him.
Look like we've lost our staff.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The second, apparently, they are muted. So we're trying to figure out what the problem is.
Thank you. Except our apology, we are waiting until we get the staff unmuted?
We can go ahead. I'll remember the question if they don't.
Write a sign and put up staff unmute.
I think Mr. Manning stopped them when they're putting their heads together trying to get an answer.
It's only the 12th time I've asked the question in my 11-plus years.
I know it.
I know it, too. That's why I didn't say anything, to Mr. Raciya. I've heard it before.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Delia. I'm sorry, this is Delia Myers.
Hold on. Well, hold one minute. I apologize. I'll talk to the administrator on the phone real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
They could hear us, and so now they're trying to log back in, but we just can't hear them. So y'all logging back in now?
Are we back on?
Yes.
Yes, we're back on. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. No problem. So what I was saying before, I think someone asked me what the cap percentage was. It's 2.19 percent. The CPI is 1.81, 1.81, and the growth percentage for Richland is 0.38 percent. So add them together, you get 2.19 percent, 2.19 percent.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So again, this page is basically breaks down, I won't say a page six.
Miss, miss?
This is Delia. I had a question.
Mr. Brad, go ahead, please.
Okay, this is Delia Myers.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm being confused, Mr. Brad. Mr. Hayes, just a quick question for you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that you were projecting, there are two columns. One is with no mill increase, and one is with millage to the cap. Are you suggesting then that taking the millage to the cap is a mill increase?
No, 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 let me go back and clarify. We don't have the millage number yet. The county auditor provides that number to us in the fall. We have a millage, we have a dollar amount that's associated with the millage. Can I say it that way? So what he provided to us was a dollar amount and not a millage number, ma'am. So what we're saying is that the additional revenue that would come from from a no-mill increase would be 1.9. And the additional revenue that would come from a millage cap increase would be 4.3. But we currently don't have an associated millage number from the county auditor.
I understand. I'm just asking based on the headers that you put on the paper. So with the first column, FY2021 projected, no mill increase. And then the second column, FY2021 projected, millage cap.
Yes, ma'am.
If you're looking at the difference between the two, one of them would represent an increase over current millage, and one would not, right?
That's right, ma'am.
Okay.
That's right. So the first number would be a no-millage increase.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Livingston.
Mr. Chair? Dan Jackson?
I certainly don't want to rain on the parade. I really don't. Because I know that we're doing it the way that I've experienced it. because I know that we're doing it the way that I've experienced it before in my, my short three and a half years here. But I guess I'm wondering, uh, and certainly with no disrespect at all to the document that I've been given and the presentation that we're doing, um, is it, is it, is this prudent way to do this considering where we are today and the time that we're in? I understand traditionally we do it this way in terms of where we are, what we have, if we increase, what it'll be and those kinds of things. But I'm guessing, I'm wondering, is that the most efficient way and the most prudent way to be discussing, uh, in a public forum, this process that even suggests, given where we are in this pandemic, that any of these scenarios are even remotely possible? And I guess I'm wondering, and not to stop what we're doing today, because I'm happy to listen and I looked through the documents I were given before we got on air, but I'm wondering whether or not, given the economic situation in our county, are we in fact sort of going through an exercise that is going to radically change as a result of the realities we're facing? And so I guess I was wondering whether or not we would even, we should be even considering having a scenario that talks about it across the board, ten percent cut to begin the conversation as opposed to beginning the conversation at the level we are now and the projected level that we may or may not be able to go towards. And so I guess that's a question sort of to, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Hayes and maybe to the administrator. Administrator read a letter just at the beginning of our work session about the process of being conservative and being practical and not spending and on and on. And now we are in the process of having conversations regarding, uh, numbers that, I don't mean, again, I don't mean any disrespect, but numbers that really don't mean anything given the current economic climate of where we are. And what probably are more realistic numbers would be, what will the budget look like with a ten percent cut? Sort of Ms. Myers' question, I want to echo on, what will the budget look like with a five percent cut as opposed to what the budget looks like with no mill increase or a millage cap? And so, again, not trying to derail it, but I just am a little concerned that we had the conversation today that i- in my humble opinion, does not seem to be consistent with the financial climate that we're in right now. And is this really worth part of that effort as opposed to considering, uh, having a cross-board cut conversation and reductions and putting, uh, agencies on notice about potential reductions? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Um.
This is Delia Myers. Can I just say something to Mr. Jackson's comment?
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Jackson for saying that. I, I think I probably echoed the sentiment to, um, our administrator and obviously to you, Mr. Chairman, with my deep concern that, that what, what we need to do is put a freeze on spending and indicate to everyone that we're going to have to look at some across-the-board cuts, even if it's at this point all theoretical, as you have very well stated, Mr. Brown, because we don't have any actuals. But we do know, as Mr. Jackson has well stated, that where we are now, it's, it's just not where we're going to be. And I agree with Mr. Jackson. I don't want to pour a cold water on all the hard work that's been done to get us to this point and suggest that it is not good work. It is, but I, I do agree with him that we need to be, at least in my humble opinion as well, looking at a starting line that is some across-the-board cuts and giving this council, um, some idea of what that would look like across agencies and within our departments and what we would have to do to get there. Because I do think that that day is coming sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for, um, saying that and thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Let me ask, let me ask staff to quickly respond to that, then I'll follow some other questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'm going to briefly allow Mr. Hayes to, to respond and then I'll, uh, follow, uh, follow in just here and give you my comments on, uh, on that information that you just heard.
Um, yes, um, uh, Mr. Jackson and, uh, Ms. Myers, I certainly appreciate you all's comments. Uh, your concerns were very much concerns that staff themselves had. In our letter that we sent the council to get, uh, the budget calendar approved, in that, uh, memo, I requested the very much the same items that you all were talking about because we did not know the impact of COVID nineteen on the council, uh, excuse me, on the county's expenses for FY twenty. We didn't feel comfortable having a discussion about the budget for FY twenty-one. Uh, we went forward because the council voted that night to go forward with the budget process. So obviously, we continued plodding along and providing you all the budget document. But in that letter, I did revert, um, I did talk about some reservations about tackling any changes to FY twenty-one. So, yeah, so your concerns definitely were heard, and we did mention that to staff and that, excuse me, to council in a letter when we asked for, um, dates to, to talk about the budget. The only items that we were really considering council approving were the millage agencies because their budgets hadn't been set yet and then the one-year grants. But, but council, we, but excuse me, but staff definitely did raise those concerns in that letter.
Mr. Chair, members of council, this is the administrator. Uh, so even before COVID nineteen, I had raised some, uh, concerns and some suggestions about, uh, the need for us to relook at our expenditures and potentially to tighten some things up. Uh, in the face of COVID nineteen, as I, uh, alluded to in the letter, uh, we certainly know that we got to make some changes. Now, my understanding is that Richland County operates on a biennial budget and as a result of that, that fiscal year twenty-one was already approved. And so this, this process was a process to communicate that you already had made some decisions and that future decisions would have to undo decisions that you had already made. So what I'm interested in is hearing, uh, the conversation as to, you, I, I've heard a couple of things here. I know we're, we're, we're talking in general, but in fact, if it is going to be a, uh, ten percent, five percent, uh, across-the-board, uh, style cut that's supported by council and communicated across all departments and agencies, uh, I, as your county administrator, uh, am certainly willing to work through that process. Well, one of the things that I talked about in the earlier council meeting is that I would need the support of council as we address these issues across all departments and all agencies. And so I want to just make sure that, um, I carry out those duties, but that we recognize that, uh, there may be some, some, uh, areas there that you have to look at to see whether or not you can actually do that across the board for all county departments and all agencies, uh, within, uh, the Richland County funding structure. Uh, but certainly, uh, I am definitely willing to go in that, in that direction with this conversation, uh, related to twenty-one. So, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll leave that to you, but I'm certainly interested in hearing that feedback as I have communicated in my letter that I think, uh, prudence is definitely necessary , uh, from a funding standpoint at this time.
Yeah, ju- just quickly, I think the most important thing at, at this, this particular point is for us to try to figure out at, at some point, what is a true projected revenue, um, before we decide was, whether the ten percent cut rate or whatever we need to do. Is there a way we can, and, and is there a time we can come up with what might be a pretty good projection of what the revenue might be, you know, based on looking back at, at, um, the current year? Mr. Hayes, is there a way we can, at some point, just get a good projection of the overall revenue?
Uh, Ms. Mr. Chair, I'm asking, me and, um, Director Ham had had some initial conversations this morning. I, I can't give you a date right now, sir, but in the companion document that we create, I certainly would sit down with her and see if, you know, her, her staff works on it and my staff works on it, and we kind of meet in the middle. And I'll, I'll see if we can kind of, between the two of us, come up with a, a estimated date that we would have some, um, uh, some, the, the issue is, if I, if I be honest with you, our property tax revenue category, a lot of the revenue that that state has to do with taxable sales, you know? And of course, with a lot of items being, but when I, and let me say what I mean by taxable sales, local option, sales tax credit, a lot of that revenue is potentially at risk because a lot of businesses, of course, have been shut down for, for a considerable amount of time. So a lot of that revenue is at risk, plus there are some other revenue items in the general fund that's lagging like business, like, so, but, but her staff and my staff are both are working diligently to come up with some revenue projections. It's just that a lot of information won't be in until later on in June. Uh, so, but we're trying to project out as it is now. But getting with her, I will quick, we will quickly try to get a date to share with the administration and council.
Mr. Chair.
That's the part of starting point.
Mr. Chair McBride speaking.
Ms. McBride.
Since the FY twenty twenty-one budget, uh, we've already, we had with our biennial budget, those both were approved, but each year, um, we just have to go then, I guess. It's, it was approved last year, the two budgets, right? Twenty and twenty.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So.
This is a budget amendment, that's right.
We would have to do a budget amendment. All right, so is there a way, because we've already approved it and at the rate that we approved not to increase it? And could there be a clause regarding a contingency plan based on the revenues we receive? If we stay at the current level for budget improvement and then have a clause, a contingency plan based on our income and revenue?
Yeah, well, I, 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 I think if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're saying is just currently operate at the level that is currently been approved and then with the intention of either moving that number up or, well, I guess down or up depending on the revenue level that, that we end the year with. Is that, is that, am I understanding you correctly?
That's what I'm saying, and at the same time, we would have to make notice to all of the agencies regarding this plan so that they could, uh, budget appropriately.
Yeah, I, I don't see why you couldn't put a, a caveat in there that, you know, especially, um, uh, communicating to groups that, uh, your budget, uh, for FY twenty-one is approved at the current level, but is contingent upon how revenues for FY twenty-one come in. So, yeah, we, we certainly can communicate that to those departments and to all the depart, well, to all departments that are impacted by the general fund. So absolutely, we could do that.
And I was saying that because that's what a budget is, basically a projection. That's what we have budgeted. We don't have the resources. We budget this. So I'm thinking that because it is the projection that maybe we could, um, because the work that we've already done is good to move forward with that plan and then you all would have a better idea of the actual amount of money, revenues we'll have coming in and not to hold up the process.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Manning and Ms. Newton have their hands raised.
Thanks, thank you very much. Let me get off to the screen and get to that then. Um, I have Manning and, and Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, along with what Councilwoman McBride was saying, I, I think we need to make sure that we clearly understand if there is any action the council needs to take in terms of a continuing resolution kind of thing like they do at the State House moving into the new year without the budget finalized. The second thing is, and I'm not a finance person, but I am a historian having been here when Richland County transferred to the biennial budget. My understanding is that it would not actually be budget amendments because that's three readings and a public hearing that when we last year at this time approved and what we're seeing is approve spending, that the council makes a two-year decision, but we never have yet done the third reading for the second year of the biennial budget. And because law says you can only approve a budget at the county level for a year and that what we actually do is technically early in July, do the third reading. So i- if I recall correctly, we did first, second, third and public hearing on year one, and we did first and second reading on the year we're now looking at. So either somebody can say, yes, that's right, or they can go back and look at the history of that. And that may go to.
Mr. Manning, I thought we did a third reading on this budget in Ju-, on twenty-one budget in July, this past July.
We did. We, yeah, we, we, the third reading of FY twenty was June tenth. June tenth was third reading and July eighteen.
Yep, that's right.
July eighteen was.
Yeah, all right, so then, yes, I guess this will have to be three readings and a public hearing to make any downward changes. The third thing that I did want to say, um, with respect to what Councilman Jackson said in terms of moving ahead and in that statement was as a result of the financial situation that our county is finding itself in just for archives of any record that somebody might listen to or that might be documented from this meeting is the ca, the situation that our county finds itself in just like the other forty-five counties in South Carolina as a result of COVID nineteen, that this is not a Richland County specific county finance problem. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Newton.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just following up to get a little bit of information into the answer to Ms. McBride's question. Mr. Hayes, we were talking about the hypothetical possibility of reaching out to agencies in advance and saying, hey, we might be revising these budgets downward. I just wanted to clarify that when you were referring to agencies, were you referring to all agencies? That would be millage agencies. That would be the agencies in the lump sum appropriations. I just want to understand who that applies to when we're adjusting it or put another way, confirming that the areas where we do have the authority to revise numbers versus the areas where we don't. And I don't want to derail the conversation, so that might be something we can talk about as we address each section, but just wanted to be clear on, on who we were including when we say agencies. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Newton, is that a question for me or Ms. McBride?
That, that was a question for you. It was just a question that, that I had kind of following up on your answer to her question.
Okay, well, based off what Chair Livingston said at the beginning of the conversation, Mr. Brown, I would, and here certainly I cannot speak for the council, but I was under the impression everybody that was funded out of the general fund would be included in that. And so lump sum groups, which you all have approved for both years of budgets, those groups would also be contacted as well to let them know that potentially the amount that council has approved would not be the, uh, the total amount that council approves for FY twenty-one. In other words, there could be some adjustments. So unless council, uh, tells me otherwise, I, I would, uh, make that notice to all groups unless this body tells me different.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Someone else to speak.
It was me, Ms. Dickerson. Yes, I'd also like to follow up on Ms. McBride's, um, comments earlier. And that is, uh, Ms. McBride, uh, were you referring to if there is, there's a possibility that we may or may not, um, in, you know, receive much more than we anticipate in the budget? However, if you said we come in above that, that you would also like for that to be, um, a part of, of the, um, upward, upward part in the budget, is that what you're saying? Are you just?
I, I was only saying if we come in with, um, additional revenues, we would still keep it at the same rate.
Okay, that's what I want to be, um, clear on is whether, if we come in above that, we would still maintain this particular budget.
Yes, that's what I was thinking, but I was just trying to suggest the process.
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to understand. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hayes, I have a quick question. Go along with what I was saying relative to what the, um, state legislator do each year. Well, not each year when, when it don't make the decision. And that is, um, you know, just move forward, um, with, 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 with the current budget until you make the adjustments. What problem would that create for us since, since we've already had?
Well, there, there, there are two things. You, the continuing resolution on the state level is mostly because states do not operate on a budget, biennial budget, so they don't have a, a budget approved for the, uh, the next year.
But they do the previous, they do the previous year though.
Yeah, right, but I'm saying, this council does have a budget in case, so could you all? Pass a, and again, I, I don't know if this would be a legal question or not? But could you all pass a resolution, you're saying, to continue at the FY 20 funding level, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but I'm not sure whether? I have to ask you how, whether we can do it or not, though, because? We, we have technically approved the 2021 budget.
Right, right, that's what I said, so again, I, I, from a legal standpoint, and I don't know if anybody is illegal? Because I don't, I don't know if a continued, because you have an ordinance in place already for 21? What would a continuing resolution do? I, I don't, I, I guess I couldn't answer that question.
That would be the concern, I, I'd rather keep it at the current level, but the question is, the current level for 21? Is something different?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McBride?
I've been in situations before, at the state level? Where we were budgeted at one area and they had to come back in and amend it, and we had to do cuts? And that's what I was? Basically saying.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm getting at too, yes.
Mr. Chair, I, I would say this? Because no one obviously would spend all of their budget in the first quarter? And I had a conversation with someone recently? You could have departments? Continue to be funded at their current level? And then once information is known later date? If council opted to make any, either continue with the budget as already approved for FY 21? Or make some type of amended to that, but? From a, from a, and from administration standpoint, and I'm not talking about county administrators, but from an administrative standpoint, that might be a better term? A department could be told they have the same funding level for FY 20? If you so opted to? Because no one is going to spend the entire budget in quarter one? So from that standpoint, something like that could be done if that's what the council opted.
Mr. Chair? I was thinking the same thing, Mr. Hayes, but using FY 21?
But, yeah, that, that's, either one of those would work.
Mr. Chair, this is Daley Myers, may I be recognized?
You recognize his face.
So, Mr. Brown? May I ask a question? So let's, under this, under the analysis that we're sort of going through now, which is? Maybe go forward with a current? The current year's budget or next year's budget, whichever the legal department tells us we'd have to use per the ordinance? Let's assume that we did either one of those things, I personally wouldn't be in favor of that, but even if we did, even if the council voted to? Would, would a corollary to that have to be a freeze on hiring? Because you could hire, you know, ten people in Q1? That blows you out, you know, that blows your budget? For, you know, the rest of the year in terms of that, that portion of the budget, so? There would have to be some areas, wouldn't there be? That we'd have to look quite carefully up, I, I would think that? You know? And I may be in the minority on this, I don't think there's any scenario under which either? This year's budget or next year's budget is going to be operational? Post-COVID-19? I would personally not like to be allowing anybody to operate under either one, but I could understand? Why the council would vote that way? But I would like it to be accompanied by some reality check on? You know, hiring, and maybe that hiring has to go through some elevated process? Or it's just completely frozen, so that we don't create problems down the road, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Myers, to address your question? The, the short answer is yes? And also internally? I, I have had conversations with? Members of? Our elected officials in, in a, in a call on last week? Where this question came up? And while I can't direct them specifically what to do, I have asked them? To? Make those decisions, knowing that? We're in tight times? Additionally, in terms of employees of the county administrator? Anyone who asks us to hire someone? There is a rigorous process? And right now, pretty much everybody has been declined? So with the exception of the detention center? So, yes, ma'am, I'm of the mindset that hiring? You don't have to use the term freeze, or you can use the term freeze, but? Hiring would be very difficult? And only those departments who are? Like the detention center who, who has a certain requirement by law? To maintain a ratio? Will have a real reason to bring somebody else on board, so? Hiring would be one of those areas that you would certainly change.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Newton has her hand raised.
Ms. Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a different line of questioning, but a similar line of thinking from what Ms. Myers just said? We were talking about agencies, or departments rather, that we control? But I guess it would be helpful in this process if we outline any other areas of risk? If we proceed as we planned previously, as if nothing's going to change, so for example? Do we create the possibility that? Other agencies might ask for a dispers-, a disbursement of funds at the beginning of the calendar year? And then we've paid all of the, the money that we had originally planned? But then? We need to do, to lower the budget later, I don't know if I'm being clear, let's say I'm, I'm Acme nonprofit? And I was allocated $500,000? Do we set up a scenario where I can do a budget request on July 1st that says, please give me my $500,000 now? Now, it could be that our budget process isn't structured that way? I just want to confirm that? As we have this line of, of thinking, but I guess from, from my perspective? What I would much prefer to do? Is to operate under the assumption that we're going to have lower revenues, because nobody? Nobody's ever upset when they get more money than they were planning on? But it just seems, looking at the economic realities, looking at the downturn in our major sources of revenues, that that would be more prudent? But now I'm editorializing, my question is? If we proceed as if nothing has changed, do we create a situation where there are other outside agencies who could get all of the funds? Even if later we needed to adjust the number? Mr. Hayes, that, that question makes sense?
Yes, I, 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 I answered the question, the way it works now?
Thank you.
For, for lump sum groups? Unless they, if they, if, you can only get, you request your full amount if you have funded 25,000 or less? If it's anything more than 25,000, we disperse that quarterly? So we divide it by, there are four equal payments, so the only groups that would get all of their money at one time? Is the group that council approved for 25,000 or less.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
I, I know, I think I have Ms. McBride next.
Yes, based on protocol, we would have protocol in terms of the funding? And if you get a budget knowing that it's a contingency budget and that you may change? Most budget administrators know not to hire? I mean, this is like common sense that this is a contingency budget, so you're not going to go over there and hire someone? Realizing that's going to be a full operational budget? But we could, we could provide explanation and detailed information on that, so that's not really a big issue, I don't think.
Any other comments? Let my staff to? See where they think we are?
Well, Mr. Chair, this is the administrator? So at this point? I'll tell you where I think we are, and certainly please? Correct me if I'm wrong? It sounds like the council has reviewed the? Document they received? And that the focus right now is not so much on? What 21 was already approved for? And what 20 may end like? But it sounds like the conversation needs to shift towards? What council is really looking to do? As we prepare for the next fiscal year? So whether that is in fact? Across-the-board cuts? Whether that is in fact? Speaking to our various folks that we fund, letting them know that? That more than likely there will be a decrease? Of some sort? Or whether that is specifically saying, we will only be funding you at a decreased level? Over the first quarter? And that we will not make any additional? Request or amendment to that until after the first quarter of the next year? Those types of things sound to me like? The path we need to be discussing as we realistically addressing? What we're going to do next year, so I think those things would be a little bit more helpful at this point in time? But, but certainly you can, you can tell me where I'm off the mark.
Well, I just think we need to have a real time of when we're going to actually? Make a decision based on projected revenues, so we have to have a real time to do that, though.
Ms., Mr. Livingston, may I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, we included in the letter of transmittal? A potential? Track for the general fund, and I think it started with a? A work session for the general fund itself, I, I think I placed that in August? When you all came back, if I'm not mistaken? But it, it, it went up to? An amendment, third reading date of sometime in September? Which would be before the county auditor would take the millage council, because I, I did consult with him? But in that letter of transmittal, you do see a potential? I call it a sidetrack, if you will? That the general fund budget amendment could take place, so we, we did put that in the el-, the letter of transmittal.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? No, no, no.
Chairman, this is Jim Manning.
Ms. Manning?
Thank you, so my question is? Are we still gonna Zoom Zoom next Thursday?
Yeah, well, if I may answer that question, next Thursday was? Millage agencies and other funds, which would be on their own, they would be on the current track, so? Unless, of course, you all decided not to, that was, that was my intention.
Well, if that's all we're gonna do, can we say yay or nay on that today, rather than? All get on and? Next week say? Oh, we still don't know anything, and we're gonna have to put it off?
Your points were taken. Any other feedback reference?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McBride, I think? Yeah.
Does the administrator or Mr. Hayes need time to? Think over the dilemma that we're in now and come up maybe with the, the best? Means of carrying the budget through based on this conversation? And based on their expertise in the financial area?
That's a good idea, just redo the budget schedule? Based on what we're talking about, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and also the budget scheduling, also? In terms of our projections, our funding?
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on Mr. Manning's comments and even Ms. McBride's comments there? I, I think we need to? Make sure? If another letter is going out or some type of a call to these millage agencies? That they're made aware of the fact that we really do need? A cut and dry budget, and that there was normal requests of give us to the cap type of thing? If, if we're going to be serious about? Trying to reduce our costs because we don't know what's coming in right now? Thank you.
Mr., Mr. Chair, may I say something real quick in response to Ms. Malinowski? Yeah, the, the millage agencies have submitted, well, with the exception, I think the school districts, they told me they were coming in later? The millage agencies have some, some, sent in copies of their budget requests? That my staff is compiling, and the intention was to get those out? To council on Monday? So that you all would have that in advance of next Thursday, so we, we have gotten packets? I believe from all of the millage agencies, with the exceptions of the behavior, mental health? And the school district, but the, the zoo, recreation commission, the library? All of them, and the Mittler, uh, Mittler Tech, they have submitted budget documents? That be reviewed by council.
Mr. Chair, this is the administrative, administrative again, sir, can you let me know when I can be recognized, please?
You, you, you can now?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was no member of council with their hands up? So? I asked a question earlier, and I know some council members have already weighed in? But I must admit, I'm a little unclear right now? So? I understand that we have a, an economic dilemma that many counties are facing? But what I need is more specificity from this body on what areas? Of, uh? In terms of addressing the budget, so one of the things I've heard is? A contingency? Making sure that we don't? Give people the impression that they have a full budget that's operational for next year? And I hear that? I do also understand that this council has already approved the budget? So as a result of that, I need to understand? Is the, is the council considering? Going in at the end of the next schedule that we put out? So for example, in September? Coming back in once we have this year closed out? Knowing what the actual numbers are from fiscal year 20? Then coming back and making a decision? About necessary funding changes, whether those are cuts, whether that's everything stays flat? Whether there's defunding? Can, can you speak to me on two specific questions, number one? Are we accepting the amended timeline that was already given by the budget director? To have the council consider information? In September versus now? So that would be question one? Question two would then be? Can I get some very direct feedback on? And some council members have already spoken, I, I hate to ask you to repeat yourself, but I want to make sure we have an broad discussion? What areas? Based on what you're looking at, based on what you're hearing? Do you foresee Richland County modifying? And does your understanding of those modifications? Go across all agencies? Are there agencies that you believe that we will need to fund? At the same levels or greater, no matter what? So those are two questions that I really feel like I need to get answers for? So I can do a good job in preparing a, a budget for you with the budget director?
Okay, I, 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 let me let my colleagues who have handled this fund first, I'm Mr. Malinowski, then Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's what I was trying to get from my question, not whether or not we actually had budgets from the millage agencies? But are we going to? Re-contact them? And ask them to possibly resubmit or, or go over their budget again, letting them know? That there's a great possibility they may need to do some cutbacks on it? And that we, we can't look at it right now the way it's been submitted? And, and should some type of a letter go out to them, letting them know? The potential? Deficit they may have to come up with? That was my question, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Malinowski, and Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman Livingston, may I ask a follow-up question, please, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Malinowski, I'm asking you this question, but this may also be for other members of council? So in the scenario that you provided with that question? What I heard was? That we would go to the millage agencies or whatever other agencies and potentially ask them? To submit something? Knowing that there might be? Some reduction in funds? But what I'm trying to get guidance on is whether or not, what you're actually saying is? Richland County knows that we will not be funding you at this level? All our funding levels be reduced by X amount of numbers? So 25%, 10%, 5%, 50%? Based on some other criteria that you are deciding as the body? Versus asking them to give us a general number? And they're starting from wherever they think, versus we telling them what we are going to consider? So that's one of those areas where I'm trying to get some clarity on? One, one is, one is definitive, and another one is a little bit general? And we may still end up in the same situation with their submissions?
I understand what you're saying, Administrator Brown, and I think that we can only answer and provide a percentage? With the skill and expertise of our auditor and? Other individuals within the? Grants and finance staff? That can maybe come up with a well-educated guess? As to what percentage we may need to request these? New amended budgets? And it's with that? Skillful? Coming up with the, the actual numbers that maybe you could put in there that you may have to incur? A decrease in? X percentage points? That's it, thank you.
Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. The the revenues that are gonna come in, in my opinion, between now and July, August, particularly with some of the things we pushed back in terms of revenue collection deadlines, the revenues are gonna dictate, in my opinion, what our uh expected budget is gonna look like when we finally get the second part, get through the first quarter, as Mr. Hayes has asked. The second thing, I I think we absolutely should modify the work schedule so that Administrator Hayes and others have time to take what they've heard today and the reality of the world we're in today and revise both the revenue projections and obviously the expenses. I think the third thing is, absolutely, I would be comfortable, I'm speaking for one person, obviously, but I absolutely would be comfortable with waiting until the end of the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-one, which would be September, to approve if that requires some sort of uh continuing resolution as Mr. Manning and others have suggested. Operating at the level that they currently are, then I'm okay with that. Rather than having false hope be coming from discussions of objections that we find out later that aren't even close to reality, that we probably know now are not close to reality. But to answer your question, Mr. Brown, I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm I'm happy to share with you my thoughts. I I think we need to have a parallel track. I think we need to be talking about, right now, what types of freeze current spending process is gonna be put in place even as we speak. While we continue to talk about what the essential things are that need to occur between now and the end of the fiscal year, I have absolutely no problem using the phrase, "We need to consider across the board budget cuts in the current budget allocation process." And in the future, I have no problems in talking about proposed reductions in the funding requests that are being considered now by departments, village agencies, and any other funded agencies. I don't think this is, I don't think we're having a unique conversation. Mr. Manning said earlier regarding my comments earlier when I talked about the predicament we were in, absolutely, I was talking about the predicament we were in in all the other forty-plus counties in South Carolina. But I think they're having the same conversation that we are having in a very realistic way. And so I just want to make sure that we're applying some fiscal constraint um for the next budget cycle across the board, that anyone who hears and sees what we are discussing recognizes that, in fact, it is not gonna be business as usual from a financial perspective and that all of the groups out there, both internally and externally, are preparing for the kind of adjustment that I'm sure they had to make in their households, in their businesses, and other places, preparing for that same adjustment coming from from county council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I have Livingston, um, I don't think about this right now. Just just quick, couple, couple of quick observations. What 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 are my big concerns is, I don't want any of the agents, anybody to be surprised all of a sudden, uh, we didn't realize y'all gonna cut us, or what's gonna happen, we'll make these adjustments. So we need to make sure that's very clear upfront in terms of um what 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 they could possibly expect. Um, secondly, I'm not comfortable setting percentages on anything before we maybe part of the first quarter, first quarter something, to get some better numbers in terms of um uh what revenue is gonna really look like, and then we can start thinking about that uh at that particular point. But I think it's far too early to start thinking about that at this particular point. Um. It it it's a major concern, too concerned I want to address. Uh, Ms. McBride?
Uh, I I agree with um everything that's being said, because you have to look at all different areas. And finally, we have to make sure that we're consistent with the um biannual ordinance regarding the um budget issues. So I don't know whether we have to go make changes or what with that.
Yeah, that's that, and that's something we're gonna check with legal on.
Mr. Chair, this is Dahlia Myers.
Yes, Ms. Myers, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I want to thank my colleague, Ms. McBride, for always focusing us and pointing us back to making sure that the process is um followed and done fairly and applied fairly across the board. I think that's really important. I'd like to echo um what Mr. Jackson said about, you know, just having to look at all of this in a very clear-eyed way. And I would um also say that I am not at all opposed to um you all bringing back to us, um, Mr. Brown, several scenarios that look at, you know, what would a ten percent cut across the board look like? What would a, you know, so I I'm not suggesting this, but I'm saying someone said it earlier, twenty-five percent cut, what would this look like? And in collaboration with the agencies um and departments, what is it that that would mean so that we we understand as a body what we're doing? And so having multiple scenarios um that that allow us to make um smart cuts to meet the the challenge, because this is a challenge. And I I'm convinced that along with my colleagues, we can certainly, um, we're capable of meeting this challenge. The staff is, you know, really capable of of bringing us back some things that will help us to guide the county to a better place coming out of this. So I'd just like to see, as Mr. Jackson said, and as I think Mr. Livingston said, multiple scenarios and in harmony with Ms. McBride, just to follow um whatever process we need to follow and do it quickly so that we can get these agencies and departments some guidance so that they can plan for the next year. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Malinowski and Mr. Newton.
I have Ms. Malinowski, then I have Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, were were you or was somebody saying that uh we need to wait till the end of the the fourth quarter for this year, or was, did somebody say go into the first quarter of next year?
I said go into the first quarter of next year, Mr. Malinowski.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'm just wondering if uh staff can start to get a little idea by looking at the end of our third quarter, moving into the fourth quarter, what type of a slope we have on the revenues coming in. And that that may kind of give us an idea, because I would think it would even be equal or less moving to that first quarter of next year. So will they could give us a little heads up uh after the third and the fourth quarter even? That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I guess, to answer the question the administrator asked on my perspective. He asked for for us to give feedback. I, like many of my colleagues, again, believe that we need to provide guidance as soon as possible. And I guess from my perspective, where I see us going as a body is saying, these are the principles that we are asking our administrator to act under, because there's a lot of information that's unknown. We don't know exactly when we're going to have that information, even though we're guessing. So the the guidance that I I guess from my perspective I see is we are anticipating a decrease in revenues. We don't know exactly how much it's going to be, so we're instructing you to act in a way that presumes that we have a decrease in revenues and come back to us and tell us what are the actions that we need to take? What are the things that we need to freeze? What are the things that we need to pause? What are the processes perhaps that we need to change so that we can act under that principle or that idea that we know that revenues are gonna be cut? And while I certainly would prefer to have a precise number to say we're gonna have to decrease expenditures by seven point six five percent, w- we don't know that number, and we're not gonna know that number. And so so I would feel very comfortable, again, as many of my colleagues have said, giving the guideline that says we're anticipating cuts. Let's act as if we're having those, let's advise people, and then let's make sure that we're changing whatever policies, procedures, protocols that we need to to adapt to that. And then in the event that things uh miraculously rebound and we have more revenues than possible, then at that point, we could could handle dispersing those funds if needed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, did we help you any?
A little bit. But hey, it's it's a it's a process. We're we're working through it, so a a little bit can go a long way. Uh, I think I I got some good uh information that I could build on. Uh, and certainly this won't be our last conversation. So uh we'll begin to work on some things that we think that we're hearing, uh, and then we'll continue this conversation. Uh, I don't think at this point in time, based on this discussion, uh, that we'll uh move it forward in the same direction as we were already going in. But I I do think that that we want to, at least before we uh end this call, Mr. Chair, uh, address the grants portion, if nothing else, for information and clarity on on uh those uh other areas that may be, or that will be quite frankly impacted uh by these decisions. If that's okay with the the chair and the other members of the council?
Yes, um. We're mainly now talking about the hostile accommodation tax, those uh various grants, funds. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, that's what I'm referring to.
And and also the the external grants that come into the county, because county council would have to give approval for those grants as well.
And and we we have not approved those uh for fiscal year twenty-one yet.
That is correct, sir.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Manning and Mr. Malinowski have their hands raised.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Manning and Ms. Malinowski, go ahead on our, ask my questions later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've had this discussion any number of times, but next time we meet, I think it'd be helpful for Lego to be a part of our meeting. Thank you.
We'll make it up. Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Hayes, the H tax and A tax comes from a different pot of money, but do the discretionary grants come from the general fund?
Uh, that is a very good question. Yes, sir. Mr. Um, Malinowski, the general fund supports two types of um grants, if you will. That's the competitive discretionary grant program, which is funded at two hundred thousand. And then there's the those lump sum groups that we were referring to earlier. So absolutely, sir.
Correct. That's what I was thinking, and that I think that if we're going to discuss grants now, we maybe need to do H and A tax, because I think those discretionary grants will come under the same situation as everyone else, and we don't know what they may get or not get at this point in time, to we decide where we're going forward with the finances. Thank you.
Points well taken, Mr. Malinowski. So let's let's look at, well, then let's um just look at um accommodation.
Okay, we can go, we can go to the accommodation tax. On page fifty-one of your document. Page fifty-one shows that council currently approved A tax revenue at five hundred sixty-five thousand for both years. Obviously, with um COVID nineteen impacting uh that revenue fund. In fact, based on uh our current uh revenue, we're only forty-two percent collected of A tax dollars through May, April. Again, the the I got some direction from Director Ham that some of those numbers have not been booked yet, but still we're well below what we normally would be. So with that in mind, and we're not knowing how long COVID nineteen would impact going into FY twenty-one, we reduce the uh, well, we're recommending reduction of accommodation tax dollars for FY twenty-one. As you know, though FY, accommodation tax dollars are totally used to fund uh tourism-related groups. So 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 as not to overextend ourselves, we're recommending that that dollar amount be reduced from five sixty-five to three twenty, which we think is more reflective of what revenue may be coming in at the end of FY twenty.
Do that, do 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 that, do accommodation tax have a fund balance?
It never does, sir.
Yeah, correct.
It never does, sir. It, A tax does, but not accommodation.
Right, that's my point. I want to make that clear, yes.
So on page fifty-two through fifty-three, you will see the H, the Accommodation Tax Committee's recommendation for funding.
Based on anticipated three twenty?
Yeah, three hundred twenty thousand.
Okay. Assistant by committee?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, we gave, I, normally the committee has a little higher, again, they had the higher amount, but because we knew revenue was gonna be short, obviously, we didn't want to give them a budget total that we didn't think we could meet next year. So based off how we thought revenue would come in this year, we gave the committee a budget of three hundred and twenty thousand, and they approved these amounts for the uh the committees, the pages, the number of the groups that you see on pages fifty-one to fifty-two.
What's the percentage of that, um, that three twenty, what percentage of the five sixty-five?
I'm sorry, any question?
That three twenty is what percentage of the five sixty-five that we? That's okay if you don't have, I just asked, just thought you had, had a note. Yeah, I can figure it out, but.
I have, but you just said. About fifty-six percent.
Six percent.
Yeah, about fifty-seven percent.
Big deal. Uh, Ms. Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, separately after this conversation, could someone send me the guidelines that our committee uses to make these recommendations?
I'll make sure we put it in the campaign document, Ms. Newton.
Thank you.
You know, the question about, um.
I have one question, Mr. Livingston.
Miss?
Mr. Hayes, Mr. Hayes and also my colleagues is that uh since many of these organizations are not really having any um activities at this point in time, I'm wondering um whether or not, you know, a funding cut would reflect the fact that uh they're not having a lot of activities, then perhaps their budget probably don't need to be um funded at that particular level. Uh, does that make sense? So because I'm, everybody's having to cut back, and I think they should really understand that we are in a dire situation and that cuts will have to be made, and it's not even sure whether or not they will be um doing a lot of activities uh in, you know, until the COVID nineteen is really defined. So that's where I am on this. I'd like to see, you know, I I'd like for it to maintain where we are right now. It's not to um, you know, over budget and not, and they're not having to use the funds. We have to be careful of how we disperse these funds this year because of the COVID nineteen. Thank you.
You know, the question about the accommodation tax at this point? If not, you want to quickly address the hospitality tax?
Right, yeah. Now, that starts on page sixty. Page sixty, where you see H tax summary. You'll see three columns, FY twenty approved amount, FY twenty one requested, FY twenty one recommended. Uh, well, first of all, let me back up. Start on page fifty-nine. Fifty-nine shows you the level of funding that we currently, that council currently has approved for H tax. That amount, it has not been changed. It's the ten million fifteen to thirty-seven. We didn't alter that amount. Um, we felt comfortable keeping that amount the same, unlike uh accommodation tax, because H tax does have a sizable fund balance, so that if revenue does come in shorter because of COVID nineteen, H tax has a a pretty sizable fund balance that could absorb it. So we didn't, we didn't make any adjustments to the H tax. But of course, council obviously could, if they so choose to.
Any, any question?
On page sixty.
Go ahead.
So on page sixty, we see what council has approved for FY twenty. Basically, the uh F, the H tax fund has tier funding, as you know. We have the ordinance agency, four of which, the Columbia Museum of Art, Historic Columbia, Adventure, and the Township. And the same amounts that were approved by council for FY twenty, we we normally just recommend the same funding level uh for the subsequent year. Of course, council can obviously change that. Uh, the next level is special promotions, which include the Columbia Metropolitan Convention Center and the Columbia International Festival. Uh, same thing, we we uh recommend the same level of funding. Uh, then tier three would be Circle and Famously Hot, and then there would be um some uh advocacy Colombians of. advocacy Colombians, the council advocacy groups, the Gateway, Pocket Park, and historical, well, we didn't have any council advocacy group this year, but the historical, um, corridor and the Gateway Pocket Park were, um, continuing items that council has funded in the, um, H tax fund. And then the other level would be the five hundred thousand that the committee recommendations are. And those detailed recommendations can be found on pages sixty-one through seventy-two.
Thank you.
And of course, the one point eight million is the, the hundred and sixty-four thousand that each council member gets to allocate to groups. So that gives you total appropriation of five point three million. We have, um, contingency of a hundred and fifty thousand. Transfer is out of four point four. Remember, three million of that goes to the general fund. The rest of it goes to repay your H tax outstanding bond. So that should get the total H tax fund of ten million fifteen two thirty-seven, which would be the same thing we're recommending for FY twenty-one.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Malinowski, Mr. Manning, and then Livingston.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if we're going to be able to, uh, roll over the unspent amount for, uh, from council members, especially the fact that since about January, a lot of things have been canceled, and, and I can't speak for the others, but I myself did not allocate the funds, figuring they weren't going to really need them. Uh, so I'm wondering if we're going to be able to roll those over again this year, please?
Mr. Malinowski, that's been, uh, of course, it's up to council, but you all have done that the last two years. So obviously you could make a motion at some point in time, I guess during second reading, if you so chose to, 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 for council to do the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Um, I have, you, you may go ahead on this, um, no, um, Mr. Manning, did I, did I call you?
Uh, you said I was next after.
Yeah, I did say you were next.
Maybe go, I, I want to fall in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, could I please get from finance for under hospitality tax summary, page sixty up at the top? The ordinance agencies, could I please have sent to me the fiscal FY eighteen approved and FY nineteen approved?
Yes, sir, just for those four ordinance agencies?
Yeah, just for the ordinance agencies.
Yes, sir. We'll take care of it. Put it in companion document.
Thank you very much. And well, one other thing real quick, do we have an idea when we'll be getting the companion document?
Well, we're going to start working on it immediately, and I, I'll, I'll shoot Mr. Brown an email tomorrow of, of approximate time, so that he can share that with council.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fickersen?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I found my answer. I'm fine. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Hayes?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure there are probably some organizations that, um, was funded, but the activity probably not going to occur, because it was probably going to occur during the time, um, that we're in now.
That's right, sir.
Those, when the event doesn't take place. What happened to those funds?
In, in historically, over the last two years, your motion to, to roll over, um, unexpended fund has included councils, unexpended funds that have, were unallocated funds, but it also has included grantee funds that have not been expended. So your motion could include to roll over any unallocated council fund as well as any unexpended grantee funds.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
You recognize?
Um, I do have a question. Organizations like Adventure and, uh, Columbia Museum of Art, would they be eligible for any of the like PPP? Any FEMA monies, any CARES money? Where they may be getting from the federal government monies that could overlap or at least offset H tax money that we provided for them? And also, well, that's one question. Whoever's writing down questions for a companion document sometime. The second question is, and I don't, I don't think this is for a companion document. I think this is just for administration and maybe the COVID ad hoc committee. But for revenues that are being lost by the township auditorium, because they, unlike the museum of art and unlike Adventure, they are a Richland County department. So they don't have a way like these other organizations do to apply for federal monies for relief. But I know that council has hired, uh, that group to look into recovering monies, and I just want to make sure that that group and administration doesn't forget about the township a couple of blocks away, and it's unique as one of the liaisons to the board. Its uniqueness, I don't want that to be forgotten about if there's any federal or CARES money that could be, um, retrieved or, or captured back for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Fickersen, you recognize?
I want to comment, Mr. Manning, because that's, that was like number six on my list to talk about. Uh, and that is ver, uh, the township is very important to me, uh, given its history. So, um, I would love to follow up and concur with you on those comments, okay?
Okay.
But yes, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You beat me to it.
Well, you hurry up and go with what the other five things you have on your list.
Any, any other comments regarding the grants? If not, well, um, I think we were saying those, the neighborhood and other grants, um, since that's, that's a general fund.
Mr. Livingston, I have one other, the external grants, and then I was going to turn it over to the CPND, but we do need to look at the external grants, starting on page eighty-five through eighty-nine.
Okay.
Well, sorry, I'm sorry. Starting on page eighty-one, eighty-one. Sorry, because those are the, the grants that we currently have. Starting on page eighty-one. These are the grants currently in place that'll be carried over. You know, starting on page eighty-five through eighty-nine are the new grants. And I have my staff online to answer any questions you may have about the grant section. So page eighty-one through eighty-four are the grants that will be, current grants that will carry over. And pages eighty-five through eighty-nine are the new grants that the county, uh, is interested in receiving.
Now, the carryover grants, I guess we already committed to those, aren't we?
Yeah, we already have those. That just means it'll be continuing at least for another year.
Yeah, well, the point I was making, what much, what, much we could do about those.
Well, yes, sir.
But the, um, that's a different story about the newest on what page?
Pages eighty-five through eighty-nine.
Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, not having looked at those grants yet, and a quick glance saying that we'll request county funds once the grant funding is complete or no longer available. I think we need to take a closer look at those, just like we are all other agencies, and possibly make a determination before they're even applied for to see what type of matching funds would be needed, because we may not have those matching funds at this point in time. So I don't think we need to commit to something right now. I think we need to really have the administrator and his staff review these things with a fine-toothed comb and determine what grants may actually be needed for the carrying on of business for the agencies that are requesting them. And without some real dire need, uh, I, I think that we need to possibly let them know that those grants will not be considered, and at least right now, because who knows how long it will take for us to get back to an even keel. Uh, we can't be committing to picking up tabs for grants that expire. Thank you.
Thank you. And Miss, when it arrived?
Yeah, with the, um, new grants, we have already applied for these grants, and they've been approved. Is that not correct, Mr. Hayes?
No, 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 the, the carryover grants, that's correct. New grants, uh, new, the new grants have, uh, uh, the group may have already applied for them, but no grant can be accepted unless council approves it.
Okay, so all of these are grants that the, under the new grants, that may, applications have been made, but we have not, um, approved them. Is that what you're saying?
Right, council has not approved them. Those, those, no, no grant can be received unless county council gives approval.
That's a number of grants, okay. And just, could, could you help me with, what's the total amount that, um, for these new grants that council would have to add? Cash match?
They look on page one, they look on page ninety. Page ninety tells you the cash match. Page ninety.
Ninety, it gives us the total?
Yes, ma'am. It looks like it's one million ninety-two.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And what's, what's, be nice, okay, I see it now, total, uh, what's the total amount that we're matching? Is that the eight million or?
That's the one, that's the amount.
One million ninety-two. Cash match, the, the cash match.
How much, how much the cash match going to generate?
Right, okay, right, so the, the. I'm going to let one of my staff take over and answer the question. Let's see if she's all, Marjorie, are you on?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Marjorie King, your grants accountant. Um, it will bring in just over seven million dollars uh, for a total for the projects of almost eight and a half million.
That's what I was getting at, eight million, something, okay.
Yes, sir, and there are quite a few grants that have no match, and there are some that have in-kind match, which is what we're already budgeting. We usually use payroll for that.
Now, where is the column for the percentage of match?
Uh, that would be, whoop, okay.
I didn't see that anywhere.
We don't, we don't have a percentage on this. I can add it, uh, and put that on a companion document if you like.
I'd love to see that, please.
Yes, sir. I will take care of that.
Don't know whether I'm giving them nine percent or ten percent.
Um, the, it's normally twenty. There are few that have a little bit less uh, for actual cash match.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to see, see, see the percentage match, yes.
Yes, sir. I will add that column.
Mr. Chair, you only wanted the catch, catch, cash match. You don't want it for the in-kind, right? It's only for the cash match.
Yeah, main, yeah, right, cash.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, my clarification, my question is, um, if you could explain a little more, uh, and you can put it in the companion document if you don't want to do it now, the actual in-kind match, how that takes place?
Uh, what we do is, it is salaries of other employees that, uh, are doing similar work, and we use those salaries, uh, what we pay our, our employees currently, uh, and we use that as, instead of a cash match, we use that instead. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, Mr. King.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? You referenced the, um, grants. If, if not, um, we'll move to that, this last, that last category of grants.
Yeah, so thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to ACA Powell and members of CPND staff, and thank you again for hearing, listening, listening to the, the general fund and grants portion today, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Livingston. The first portion of grants that we'll be discussing are the conservation grant, and Quentin S. Conservation Division Manager is on the line to walk you through those grants.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Crane?
Good evening, um, Councilman Livingston and, uh, council members, can you hear me?
Not as, not as loud as you could be.
All right, here, let me try to move forward. Um, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
All right, good. Um, the Conservation Commission allocates about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year for grant, for their grants program, a hundred and seventy thousand for historic preservation, and eighty thousand for community conservation grants.
Excuse me?
Somebody give me a page number for that?
That's what I was going to ask.
I'm sorry. Page seventy-three is where it starts and goes through seventy-five. And for FY twenty-one, the commission receives sixteen applications that totaled four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Um, we approved twelve, the Conservation Com, Rec, Commission recommended for funding twelve applications totaling two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The commission recommends also shifting thirty-seven.
Mr. Epps, I need some clarification, please. Bill Malinowski. Those figures you're giving us, I do not see anywhere on pages seventy-three, four, or five of our budget book. So have you changed some things since this was put out?
No, um, I, I'm just giving an overview, um, but if you'll give me a second, well, I'll, well, I'll tell you what, I will just switch to the information that you guys have. If you look on page seventy-three, that the community conservation grant recommendations are there. There's four of them, and they total forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Now, that generally would be eighty thousand dollars, but since we only got four applications from community conservation, we shifted thirty-seven thousand, uh, five hundred and sixty-one dollars to the historic grant category. And if you go to page seventy-four, you will find the historic grant categories that we recommended, and those grants totaled two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. And on page seventy-five, it shows the breakout of unincorporated, unincorporated areas versus incorporated areas, and what that looks like.
Now, what's the funding source for the, um, conservation grants?
Yes, ma'am, it's a half-mill funding source, um, specifically for the Conservation Commission.
Which is general fund?
General fund.
Issue, any questions?
I'm not sure that, uh, general funding, since it comes directly from a half-mill, but I, I would defer to, uh, James for that.
Any, any further questions?
Mr. Chair? That question answered. Is Mr. Jank, Mr. Hayes on the phone?
Mr. Hayes is here.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, I think the question was, was that conservation funds come from? It comes from the half a mill, uh, that is for the, uh, conservation fund, and that's a special revenue fund.
And I did have one more, um, request from the commission regarding the budget. We had six grants from FY twenty, which were delayed, significantly delayed because of the COVID- nineteen crisis, totaling twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. And we would like to request that those be carried forward to FY twenty-one so that they can complete those projects. so that they can complete those projects. Because generally, we don't allow them to go over the year period. But in the, in this case, um, they, they weren't able to finish these projects.
I have one, uh, Mr. Malinowski, then I ask, ask my question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Hayes, is the, uh, Conservation Committee here, is this group allowed to carry a fund balance?
Um, yes, that, every fund that, that does not totally expend it has a fund balance, so the Conservation Commission does have a s- a small fund balance. I can include that total in the companion document if you like, sir.
No, I, I don't, I don't need that, I just wanted to have that clarified first, because every year I ask the same questions, and every year I, I don't see anything changing to the next year. And that is, uh, my recollection is that we have something written up that states that out of these funds, seventy-five percent should attempt to be spent within the unincorporated area and twenty-five percent in the incorporated.
All right.
And we got it totally the opposite here, we got seventy-two and twenty-eight. And I get the answer, well, nobody else applied. Well, I don't know how the word is getting out that there are funds available to begin with. And secondly, in order to keep within the parameters of what the council has requested, I see no reason why you can't just give the amounts that you're supposed to give and keep the rest in a fund balance. And if somebody does come in with a, with a request, you've got it. Thank you.
Listen, now, now, see, one, one correction is, council really, um, did not make that decision by that, that proportionate for, um, these funds? Because remember, we made the argument that these funds were general, general funds, um, collecting both the city and the county, and 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 we decided not to do that with these particular funds? Because these are general, general, um, fund, just as opposed to hostels and other ones that they collect from the county, but these funds are collected, sit, you know, county and city.
Uh, Mr. Hayes just said it's a special revenue type fund, he didn't say, he, you came from.
That is correct, I would like to clarify, the general fund does, you all did vote two years ago in twenty-eighteen, the fund, um, eight, the conservation fund by one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, that's part of those transfers out, it's a very small one from the general fund compared to some other one. But the conservation fund does receive one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand from the general fund that the council passed at the beginning of binding in budget two, I think it has something to do with some, uh, Pinewood Lake or Millwood Cabin properties or something. But it, it is supported by one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand from the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Chair, hearing that, I think that all these funds need to come under the same requirements that we're doing for everyone else. I don't see that there's that, uh, dire need to replace gutters or windows or, uh, painting and siding that if everybody else has to cut back. I don't think that this group should be allowed to go, go full bore and spend the full amount either, I think they need to send letters out if that's what they have to do, or in their, uh, when the request comes in, in their response, I think they need to let people know, we're in different times, and your window replacement just may have to wait. Your bridges during the wa- in the walkway may have to wait. Thank you.
Okay, if no other questions, we'll move to that next set of, um, grant funds.
Yes, sir, Chairman Livingston, the next, the next set of grant funds are the Neighborhood Improvement Grants, or excuse me, the Neighborhood Matching Grants from the Neighborhood Redevelopment Budget, and those begin on page seventy-six of your document. And Division Manager Tommy Delage is on the line to go through those.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of County Council, so, um, kind of similar to Conservation Commission as far as for our funding, uh, we get, did that half a mill. Um, these, these Neighborhood Matching Grants are coming annually. Um, this year, we actually had an increase in grants, um, from previous years, last year, we received forty-eight grants, this year, we moved up to fifty-six grants. Um, the total amount that was requested, uh, was at, and I apologize, I lost my view, um, at eighty-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, the committee that reviewed the matching grant, um, award recommended that, um, two projects or two organizations not be funded. So the total recommendation, uh, for this fiscal, upcoming fiscal year is seventy-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and thirty cents. Um, these projects were, uh, based off of eligibility, uh, guidelines, um, that they must provide a public benefit to the neighborhood and its residents, uh, must involve neighborhood, um, people in all phases directly, and be achievable by the end of the fiscal year of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Any questions about the they put, uh, grants, and that's ends on page seventy-nine, I think. Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Delage, are you saying, uh, also that a portion of, uh, this money comes from the general fund?
In my understanding is, and I hope Mr. Hayes can wrap me up, is that's a special revenue fund as far as that, that dedicated half a mill?
It's a half a mill, general fund, half mill. Corrected.
Mr. Malinowski, Mr. Delage is correct, it's a half a fund, a, a half a mill special revenue fund, not general fund.
Okay, is, do, do any general funds at all go into this program?
No, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Any further questions? Is there further questions?
Well, I have one.
Yes.
Okay, I see, um, on page eighty.
Mm-hmm.
Trenton Park Neighborhood Organization, um, and it had denial project is to fund City of Columbia Park. Um, is that the reason, um, it was denied?
Yes, ma'am, that was correct, and it was just a recommendation for denial based upon that project, because the City of Columbia has, um, you know, funds dedicated for their improvements. So, um, when this is intended to be something that is, uh, you know, by the neighborhood for the neighborhood, uh, such as, um, HOA property signs, uh, things of that nature, not necessarily to fund another, uh, uh, municipalities improvements.
Well, I just saw someplace elsewhere, we funded, um, the City of Columbia, not that I'm saying that's correct, but we did it in one area, and then we're denying it in another, we're not being consistent. And in your grant application, does it state, because this is going to the Neighborhood Organization? And not, um, and they're working, it's my understanding, they're working with the City of Columbia? I'm just looking for consistencies and making sure that we're following something that was in the guidelines that stated that you couldn't do it.
Yes, ma'am, I'm looking through the guidelines right now, um, to kind of confirm.
Because it is to the Trenton Park Neighborhood Organization. And there are other projects being funded that are in incorporated locations.
Mr. Chair.
That is correct.
Maybe we could get that in a companion document so we can move along.
Thank you, Mr. Malinowski.
McBride, go ahead.
No, I agree with Ms. McBride, that needs to be checked into.
Thank you, Mr. Malinowski.
Ms. McBride, there's, there's, there's nothing in the documents that specifically say incorporated projects cannot be considered.
Okay. I think that answers my question.
And, and generally, projects that are not eligible include equipment for businesses, schools, government departments, um, and that was one of the reasons why the group recommended denial.
Well.
So I, I think to clarify what Mr. Delage is saying, it was the type of project, not the location.
Okay, I, I, I'll check with you all later on this one, okay?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that you, Mr. Malinowski?
Yeah, it is, I didn't get over to put my hand up, but I haven't, but while, while we're looking at this, and since there's no requirement, whether it be incorporated, unincorporated, what about the one on page seventy-eight, uh, down there? Uh, North Twenty-One Terrace Neighborhood Association, where it says Neighborhood Sign Voter Registration. I think if it's got something to do with voter registration, then that request should go to our Election Commission Voter Registration people. Come up from the bottom, one, two, three, four, fifth one up from the bottom.
On page one?
Right, right where they got it on the screen.
Page seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Page seventy-eight.
One up from the bottom. In the description, it says voter registration. I guess it's a sign to do with voter registration.
Well, it has Neighborhood Sign, so, um, it's a, that, that's a combination of projects, maybe?
It's, yes, ma'am, it's two separate projects recommended for funding, Tommy, can you give us any details about what that second voter registration project is?
So, a- and based off the, the conditional approval, I think that, that was one of the, um, you know, kind of issues that staff had, um, or excuse me, that, uh, the reviewers had, um, a- as far as for, and I'm sorry, I'm scrolling up to that right now, um, you know, w- with that, we can always recommend funding parts of projects versus, um, you know, funding that, uh, if that's a desire. Um, you know, we, unless they just did not, or were not eligible, um, or did not provide the, the needed documentation, um, or, you know, were missing major blanks, that that's the reason why they're, uh, conditionally approved.
And I think this one was a, I think this one was not part of the regular process, this was a carryover from a special, um, allocation in the budget. So this should not have been a part of this normal process.
Okay, but I also like to point out where it says approved, it says conditionally approved, and it says late. And that was the only one that I noticed that had late, and if we're going to allow one to be late, that means we're going to have to allow every other one that came in late.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
I don't think that this one was a part of a normal process, we funded it last year, this was a different program. So it shouldn't have been in this part, is that correct, is that correct?
Ms. Ms. McBride, you are correct, I believe the North Twenty-One Terrace application did not come in with the rest of the applications, there was a council directive to fund the group anyway.
And there was, so it's not really late, and then there were some issues in trying to get it done, and I think that was based on a, a, an amendment that Mr. Livingston made. So this should be funded, and I guess you just put it in this area because of the pot of money.
Just follow.
Correct. To Mr. Malinowski's point. To Mr. Malinowski's point, I will pull details about what the actual project is and include that for the group's information.
But it's not late.
Well, and some clarification on the note, late.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions about the neighborhood, um, projects? If not, uh, Ms. Powell?
Chairman Livingston, that concludes the Neighborhood Matching Grants as well as the Conservation Commission Grant.
Miss, uh, Powell, could I make a clarification, please?
Yes. Go ahead, Chris.
Yes, I, I'd like to say that the conservation, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the conservation grants is all from the special revenue fund. It is not mixed in with general funds.
It, it, it is, it is part of a countywide millage, half mill.
Yes, sir, it is special revenue funds, a half mill, and it.
Kind of wide, half mill.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just sort of scratched the point that is collecting countywide.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think we also need to make the point that if we're discussing other millage agencies possibly having to do cutbacks, so do our own millage agencies, thank you.
Anything else, I think, Mr. Hayes, that, that's the last, Mrs. Brown, isn't that the last item on our agenda? I can't find my agenda, but I think that's.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I was going to tell you, uh, pending any further questions from the body, that does conclude our, uh, presentation work session on this evening. Uh, and we would certainly ask for, uh, your continued support, uh, as you reach out and discuss, uh, with your constituents and other colleagues around the, the state and around, specifically Richland County, uh, the, the challenges that we're facing, uh, and that we're asking everyone to work with us, uh, as we look at these, uh, budgetary reductions and, uh, reduced expenditures.
Let me say to my colleagues, um, make sure that if you have any questions you didn't think of, you want to ask, make sure you get them to Mr. Hayes and Mr. Brown as soon as you can, so he, they can add to that companion document that they get to us, so we can make sure we have everything addressed, um, but by the time we discuss this again. And I'm sure there'll be stuff you think about as soon as you leave the meeting. Any further questions, comments? No further questions, comments? Staff, no further questions, comments?
Goodbye, everybody.
Time to go. Goodbye.
Staff still here?
We're still here, we don't have any additional comments, sir.
Well, I just want to tell you, you know, if you have any other questions, comments, um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, sir.
All right, meeting's adjourned, everybody have a.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.